So, we're reconvening from executive session. And so, we need to discuss item number 10, which is the replacement item under education. And would somebody like to move that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following agenda item. The recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following resolution. Whereas in accordance with the requirements set forth in PL 212010, Chapter 122, the West Milford Board of Education has received the follow- uh, we have-
That.
Has received results of HIB investigation reports on March 10th, 2015. Therefore, be it resolved that the West Milford Board of Education approves issuance of a written decisions affirming the superintendent's decision in the following HIB investigations. There are four HIB investigations. One is substantiated, that's E7, E8 unsubstantiated, H13 and H14 unsubstantiated.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yep.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Need a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the meeting is officially adjourned. Note the locations of the emergency exits. If we could just have a moment of silence for our men and women in the military. Please stand to the flag salute. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Publics Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, the Record, Aim West Milford, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney and Cablevision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the Board Meeting Calendar Resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library and all district schools. Roll call please, Mrs. Francisco?
Mr. Babbitt?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Dever?
Here.
Mr. Drew? Mr. Foodie?
Yep.
Mrs. Keppey? Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Mrs. Schultz?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Executive resolution resolved that the Board going to executive session at 9:00 PM for approximately 60 minutes for the purpose of discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel, HIBs, the superintendent's search and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time their privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second.
A mover first?
Oh, how about I move it first?
Thank you Debbie.
Second.
Thank you Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Superintendent's report?
Couple of topics I have to talk about first would be the PARC assessments that have been taking place since, actually a full week now, since last Tuesday because we had delayed opening on the birthday of the testing. So, things are moving along nicely. The infrastructure is holding up. There is some problems, we did have some problems with interface. Few glitches where the screens were frozen and the kids were being kicked out of the test and a pop-up blocker and so forth. All those things have been rectified, so that's okay. Really didn't hurt anything, just took up some time. The examiners are doing a good job. I mean, it's the first time for everybody. So, so far, the students involved in the testing have been very resilient and the practice and everyone participating, again, are doing a very good job. Little disturbance we had last week, I'm sure you saw it in the paper and I know the Board saw it from my email, that we had a gas leak problem over at McApin School where a couple of, well, I shouldn't say, the entire student body was sent over to the high school so we could resolve the issue. And kudos to the entire administration at both schools and the staff. It was all handled very, very well. In fact, the cafeteria staff at the high school even offered food, made food for the middle school students, which I thought was a wonderful gesture. But, again, kudos to the administrative staff and to the students. Ms. Ryan Holden and myself did greet students once they came back to McApin School to explain the situation and I congratulate everybody at that point. It really, it really worked just the way it's supposed to go when you have an evacuation. So, very happy with that. As far as the kindergarten registration, as of today, we are up to about 117 students. So, we know that there's still quite a few out there that have not registered. So, that's a concern, so we're going to keep reminding parents. Besides which, by the 15th, which is, what is it, like Sunday, Monday, 15? Yeah.
Yeah.
Coming up so quickly.
Friday's the 13th.
If those parents who have their children registered by that time will be able to participate in the actual kindergarten kickoff, the program that we do. So, hopefully, we get, considerable amount more of students registered by that time. And so, that's what's happening there. We look at the high school musical that took place. That was outstanding, totally outstanding from the sets to the choreography to the music. It was just wonderful, just a wonderful production. Hope you had a chance to see that. And also, from the high school, a very positive thing last night was the empty bowl program that John Barna was talking about at, I believe, the last meeting we had. And, you know, I walked in there, I had ticket number 168, so I'm assuming that there probably was close to maybe 200 by the time all was done. And the students and the staff members did a wonderful job in making the bowls and getting them out to everybody. And I thought that was a wonderful opportunity for the community to take part in something in the district, so, again. And this is Gallagher for heading up the whole thing. So, it was great. I mean, the art department was involved, I believe the cooking class was involved. There were just numerous, so many people involved, it was just great. I was talking to the Rotary members today at our meeting to tell them how great that was as well. Something coming up on March 26th. Charlie Maisie from our bus department was having a meeting, Transportation. And it came out that Homeland Security is actually making themselves available for training for bus drivers and transportation. So, we're going to use March 26th. We're going to take advantage of this free training to come over to West Milford High School. We'll have all our bus drivers in, so we're looking at approximately 60 to 70, 70 drivers come in and have them trained and go through all the information that they have to send to us or share with us. We're also thinking of reaching out to more to closer districts who also have transportation school buses and see if they want to participate. It's free and they can accommodate up to 150 people. And, again, we're ahead of the curve on this one. Barbara knows that, I believe, once Charlie came back with the information, we spoke about it, we jumped on it. So, we're the first ones in the state to actually take advantage of this program. So, we're excited about it, so that will take place on the 26th. Other than that, you know, we continue with PARC and we'll get through this and everybody's doing the best they can. And I think, I think everything's going smoothly and I'm happy to report that we're moving along and everything is just fine.
Thank you very, thank you very much. We have Barbara, special reports and correspondence?
Board members will see that we have some minutes that are on tonight's agenda that have been sitting there since the 24th of February because of the canceled meeting. Also, I believe we're going to use the February 24th meeting to talk a little bit about the budget and deal with any questions that people, any of the board members might have had up to this point. I've not received any questions through email, so I'm not quite sure if anyone has any questions that they want to present or they want to wait until next Tuesday, which is the tender budget hearing. And we'll have a presentation at that point.
Or they can email you as well.
So, all I could, if no one has any questions, I could just give you an update where, you know, Tony and Iris and I have continued to go through the requests that we originally received, which are part of your budget book. We continue to tweak those requests. We were trying to come with a flat tax levy, but the reality is that that's not going to be able to happen. There's reasons for it, which I'd be more than happy to share with the finance committee on Thursday evening, review everything. And then, those things will be discussed on Tuesday night during the tender budget hearing. So, unless there's some kind of question.
I, I have, I didn't bring them with me, but I, there were a bunch that stick out in my head. We have a lot of paving projects.
Yes.
What gets me is it's all the, you know, like 7,000, 8,000, 50,000, nothing, 50,000, were any estimates?
Yeah, it's, the paving projects go by the, the footage, just the footage that's being paved because through EdData, you can use your paving contractors and they have an approved price per the, per way.
It's, even though, you know, you talked about this before, EdData. Just because we're using that cooperative purchasing doesn't preclude us from still going out and getting bids.
This process is usually a six to eight week process, number one. Besides the cost that you incur to have a professional draw up the specifications, the, you know, every governor has encouraged municipalities and boards of education to use cooperative purchasing, shared services, state contractors in order to expedite the work that needs to be done. Now, if this board as a whole decides that they want to use an engineering service in order to develop bids and specifications so that you can have projects, you know, the paving projects done, that's certainly a direction that you can give me, but certainly it will take a lot longer to do that.
I, I downloaded, this is from the Department of Community Affairs. Cooperative, Cooperative Purchasing Guide for Local Officials. And when we go to page one. At a minimum, each participant is required to certify that it has received the goods or services as ordered as a basis for payment. The general obligations under the Local Public Contracts Law and Public School Contracts Law with regard to advertising, the proper handling of bids and the method of awarding contracts are still applicable.
So, so, well, can I just explain something just from my past experience?
If we're looking at doing paving, there are small sections?
There were some $50,000, that's over a bid threshold.
Okay, but so, generally, when you're doing a major project, if you're under the entire parking lot, then you would call in the architect, you would have the engineer and then go out to a bid process. They might be the one that's $50,000 that's, but, but generally, what's happened, if you're doing sections, then it's really just done through, you can use like an EdData where the, the cost comes in and you kind of just move ahead with that. It speeds along the process, you're paying a fair price. And again, you're saving the cost, as Barbara noted before, you're saving the cost on bringing in the architect, which is very expensive, and again, the engineer. So, that's, you know.
I just want to add one thing. When you use a cooperative purchasing agent like EdData or, you know, Middlesex County who does this, they are still following the laws. We're signing onto them and they're certifying to us if they've gone out for bid for these and all their bidding laws and interest are being followed. So, that's, you know, even if the price is above the bid threshold, we're able to do that through that service. So, yes, the laws do apply, yes, we can still go out for bid on our own, but if we go through the cooperative purchasing agent, technically, and they're certified us that they do this, they have to apply, abide by the bid laws as well. I have a quick question for Barbara. How much do you estimate budget's going to go up? Do you have, do you have an estimate?
We're looking at 2% tax levy increase at this point.
This is just a preliminary budget.
Yeah, this is a preliminary budget. Our tax levy is frozen at, at 2%, unless we use bank cap.
Mm-hmm.
That would increase the budget more, but I think that we can come in within the 2%. I know that we're probably over 2%. But, the budget itself can grow more than 2% because you can get other revenues to help support the things that are inside that budget.
Okay.
I had, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm trying to find something.
I had, since we brought up the EdData, we're actually voting tonight on EdData for following year. And we're voting on that and you've got, I believe it's 12,200?
For what?
For funding services for the acquisition of supplies, status rated 12,200. It's on page 12, Barbara. First item under Budget and Finance.
Yeah.
When I look in our budget book, for that particular line item, we got 14,800. There's $2,600. I found a lot of other places where I think that, for no other better word, we've got more in there than necessary for those, for those line items. And like I said, I didn't bring that book with me tonight. Didn't think we were going to be talking about it, but if you want, I'll be more than happy to give you emails and-
So, we can talk about this Thursday as well.
Or we can talk about it Thursday as well.
But, didn't we get the budget books before this came up and we're only voting on it now? So, if the budget is ever changing, as far as I understand, and so, we will have to-
Not only that, there are other things that come up in one way. We just found out that we have to use educational data now to do our write-to-know surveys because everything is online and we can't do them by paper anymore. So, there's a lot of other things that come up throughout the school year that we, I don't know what's going to happen 18 months from now. Basically, our budget goes until June of 2016 and quite honestly, I'm not avoid, I, I, I just don't know what's going to happen in the future. So, $2,600 is really not a significant amount of money in a $72,000 budget.
No, there was, there were other items in there Barbara, like we'll discuss on Thursday night.
Yeah, or you can email her the questions so she has them for Thursday night, that way we can all get an answer.
Yeah, just to remind all board members, I did say that if you emailed me any questions, I would respond to everyone and put some kind of a form together so that everybody was aware of the questions and what the answers were so that everybody was on the same page.
And I think, yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just saying that the, the objective from us collectively looking at educational aspect of it and the buildings and so forth, we're just looking to keep the programs that we have. So, it's not like we're developing anything new. If we are developing anything new, it's programs that hopefully will bring revenues to the district. So, you know, again, we're just trying to maintain what we have, we're not stepping out there and saying we're going to spend lots of money on different projects. But, again, we'll discuss all this in finance, I think it'll be a healthy conversation.
Plus, and we'll have another discussion on Tuesday as well.
Yep.
Just, you know, I'd like to see pencil sharpened as much as it can, but-
So, getting back to the minutes. Special reports and correspondence, we have seven minutes here that were from February 24th.
Yeah, these are all the minutes that are available for review. I can watch you to have copies of them and all the meetings in January.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the following minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following meeting minutes, reorganization, special meeting of January 6th, 2015, executive session of January 6th, 2015. Special meeting of January 13th, 2015, executive session of January 13th, 2015. Workshop regular meeting of January 20th, 2015, executive session of January 20th, 2015. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, any discussion?
Sure.
So, sorry. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Sorry Jim. Any abstentions? Okay.
And we'll discuss the legal for anything in the session.
Okay, great, thank you. President's report. The Board has been in the process of interviewing candidates for the superintendent's position. We've already sat through, I think, two sessions and-
It's more than that.
It was four nights, four nights, but it was two sessions.
Initial and second half.
And so, now, we're at, I know that we're going to have a discussion this evening about where we're at at this point. So, at this point, I don't have any candidates' names for anybody, but I just wanted everybody to know that we have been doing our due diligence and the Board will be discussing more about it tonight. So, that's where we're at with that. Petitions and requests. Guess I should read that. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be the first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed for special action in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Need a mover? Anybody want to move that?
Oh, I'll, no.
Oh, was anybody else to speak?
No, no, we're just inviting people.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I was confused.
Is there anybody signed up to speak?
No.
Would anybody like to speak on any of the topics of the agenda?
Seeing none, like to move to close petitions and requests.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Along with the hand carries?
Along with the hand carries under Personnel and Student Affairs, number 26, 27 and 28, and under Education, item number 10.
It's a replacement item for number 10.
No, 10, sorry.
No, thank you.
Which we will vote on after executive session.
I also need to, on number three, I need to pull the board name down. I'm just waiting for other information that I'd like to have.
Under Personnel?
Yes, under Personnel, number three, there are four, four items, just removing the bottom one for now.
Any other changes? I need a second to approve the agenda.
Second.
As presented with the changes and the amendments. Debbie, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to Personnel and Student Affairs, Mrs. O'Brien.
Like to present items one through 28 for you this evening. It was one to 25 in our original book, three under the hand carries for this evening.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Need a roll call please?
Mrs. Keppey?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien? I have to abstain from number three and four. Yes, to one and two and from five to 28. Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
And that concludes Personnel for the evening.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Mrs. Keppey, would you mind doing Education?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Under Education, I think I'm motion to approve items one, one through nine?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppey?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes. Number 10 is Mrs. Keppey said we will do when we get back from executive session. Mr. Bailey, Budget and Finance.
I'd like to move items one through eight under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please?
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Like to move item number 11 under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Any questions, discussions? Roll call please?
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mr. Dever?
Abstain.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppey?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Like to move item number nine under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Keppey?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Like to move item number 10 under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion?
I need to abstain on the last one from the part regarding mine reversion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, we're on number 10.
Is there a second?
I think Mrs. O'Brien's second?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppey?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Babbitt?
What?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
That was good.
I was, I couldn't even spit it out.
Sorry.
You picked it up a little high.
It was like humida, humida, humida.
She wouldn't be so quiet in this.
Yes, sorry about that.
That was good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Foodie?
Will we see Board Secretary's report the end of this month? And will that, what, at that point?
That'll be for December.
December.
And then, in April, you'll have January and February.
Okay.
We should, we should, maybe even January because all the receipts have been put in for January, so it's just a matter, we might be able to get January's done two months ago.
Okay.
Next week.
All right. Okay.
Yep, we're getting, hold on.
Special reports and correspondence, Parks and Rec, Mr. Robbins?
There was no meeting in February. There is a meeting this month on the 19th, so following that, I should have a report.
Okay, thank you. Safety, Mr. Foodie?
Meeting was canceled, hasn't been.
Rescheduled.
Rescheduled yet? I would think that it will be this month's on.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's roundtable, Mrs. Keppe?
Thank you, Mrs. Schultz. We have our new meeting this Thursday. That's how far behind we are, but, because of the snow. But Kate Brennan, the supervisor of district testing, was a guest speaker who came in to discuss park testing. She also explained and ran through the district website to show parents a sample of park tests which are posted there. Up until now, school students have been working on sample park tests, so they can get more familiar and comfortable with the format on the computer when it comes to the actual testing day. It was explained how the park has no bearing on student placement, since the results from tests will not be sent back to the district until October two thousand fifteen. In the future, the district is not going to look only at park scores to place children, and parents shouldn't worry about the low scores and their child placement for the following year. There was also discussion about transportation department and the continuing confusion regarding snow roads, and Mr. Rashika was going to investigate. There's a concern about the town and the lack of snow plowing being done on the side roads and the safety of children. Unfortunately, plowing is a town issue and something the district has no control over. The school does communicate with the town over the status of the roads when there's a storm, but there's a specific issue with the road in a particular neighborhood. It was asked that parents call the town directly. During the month of March, Pomptonian is offering a nutritional wellness fair, which will take place at every elementary district. And finally, parents were informed the district has three snow days, which is actually two now, because we used one up. So we're all keeping our fingers crossed that we won't use the rest of them. And that's it for SRTA.
Thank you, Mrs. Keppe. Dosea County School Boards Association, Mrs. O'Brien?
Due to illness, I wasn't able to attend February's meeting. There is a meeting at the Brownstone the last Monday in March, which I have signed up, and God willing, will be able to attend.
I actually did attend. Would you mind if I kind of spoke about it?
I absolutely would mind, but go ahead.
Okay. The meeting took place on February twenty-third at the Brownstone. It had been rescheduled. There was perspectives on teacher evaluations. Dr. Amy Fretz, NJEA Associate Director, was on hand. Dr. Michael Ransick, Director of Governmental Relations, New Jersey School Boards Association. Dr. Mike Wanko, interim Superintendent Manchester, inhaled and former New Jersey Principal of the Year, and Mr. Ray Penny acted as the moderator. So there was a lot of talk about park, teacher evaluations, the history of park. They spoke about working together. They spoke about how kids need some type of an assessment. I'm not going to put my opinion into this, but it was a nice perspective, listening to all those educators that were sitting up there on the dais, and then there was a question and answer period. So, that was about it.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. And so now we have New Jersey School Boards. Mr. Foodie, anything?
I, I did have something, and I forgot to put it out there. My printer spoke with Robyn Neeham. She directed me to respond on their website for information to give the presentation. So I apologize for, for being busy and not grabbing it, but I will have it for the next meeting.
Sure, no problem. Thank you. Mr. Drew, legislative?
No report.
Thank you. Technology oversight, Mrs. Keppe?
Okay, the technology committee met on Monday, March second. Mr. Bivar Seltaheeb covered several initiatives taking place in the district at this time. First item that was discussed was a Google transition. It was highly successful project that staff has embraced. At this point in time, accounts have been created in the system. However, there are few technicalities to work out. There are, so student accounts, I'm sorry. Student accounts have been created. There are few technicalities to work out, but students in the high school and the middle school will have their own accounts up and running in the next few weeks. Once accounts are up and running, then the teachers who have received all the training will be able to implement Google Classroom, which will allow teachers to create and share documents and links with students. We had a ninety-minute meeting, so it's kind of hard to summarize it all, but I'm going to try, because there is so much going on. We are going to need PC replacements. Next year, Windows XP will not be allowed for PAR, because some of these computers can be upgraded, others can't. Bottom line, we have a large number of computers that are cycling out. iPads are still needed to provide a quality interactive operation system for teachers that replaces the necessity of expensive presentation systems such as smart boards. Our infrastructure has to be developed, and it's, and it's starting with access points. Access points. It has always been the plan to have access points in every classroom in the district. Access points allow wireless users to, access to the wireless network. If we don't provide enough access points, then students, teachers, and administrators can and will be continually dropped from the network. At this point in time, our vendor Juniper is no longer going to be producing access points. Mr. El Taheeb is researching all of our options, which include finding a new vendor, looking at the recurring yearly costs involved, looking at the backing of larger companies to ensure continued existence, and speaking with other school districts on their experience with specific vendors. The district also has to expand on our existing wiring to better support the wireless infrastructure. Once the extra wiring work is completed, that is step one, then step two will take place, which is the wireless installation and servicing. And yes, it's confusing, because for wireless, you need to install wires and devices. Mr. El Taheeb is asking every vendor to break out the cost by school and have one bid for wiring costs and provide a separate bid for installation and servicing. There were other issues discussed as well, which will involve the costs associated with technology, such as the E-rate funding, but these will be further addressed in the Budget and Finance Committee. The bottom line is that technology costs money, and to properly upgrade and meet the technology demands, we're doing everything we can to cut and streamline technology expenses through better and more tailored practices. I would truly like to thank Mr. El Taheeb. He did an incredible job of presenting and analyzing all the information put forth to the committee, and I would like to really thank him for his efforts as well.
I would too. There was a lot of information at that meeting, and it's very exciting.
I agree.
Great, great. Thank you very much. Our next report is the West Milford Education Foundation. Mrs. O'Brien?
I have to follow Mrs. Keppe, so I'm going to say no report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, township, Board of Education Joint Committee. Mr. Dever?
Right now, the Town Council and Board of Education is trying to coordinate a softball game. There'll be more information as the date comes closer. It's the end of May, and I've been in touch with councilwoman about coordination.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dever. Old business. Does anybody have any old business?
Seeing none, move to close old business.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New business?
Seeing none, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes, and then time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to come up and speak?
Seeing none, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session. Could somebody like to?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for purposes of discussing negotiations, student matters, personal, personnel hibs, and the superintendent's search and matters of attorney-client privilege.